Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Chairman Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Tonight, it's a privilege to be able to maybe follow up on some of your questions about the CIP. As you recall, on our last school board meeting on January 11th, we presented a PowerPoint. I did give you a hard copy of that. And as Mrs. Gaines just said, we will return on Monday, February the first, for another work session. So if, for example, you might ask a question, we may not have the answer tonight. We'll certainly have it for you by Monday. And again, as Mrs. Gaines indicated, that the board will be scheduled to approve the CIP 2017-2021 as part of your approved school board budget on February the 8th. So that would be the process that we would follow. As we get started, what I'd like to do would be to call our directors up by category when it's appropriate to do so for specific questions that you might have. Before I do that, I would be remiss if I didn't say a great big thank you to Mr. Hockaday, our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Forrest, our Director of Transportation, and of course Craig Greenlaw, who is our Director of Fleet Services, for the outstanding work that they did together as a team effort during this blizzard. It's hard to believe, when you look at the parking lot now, what it looked like on Monday and Tuesday mornings. But they did a fantastic job. And I just want to be able to tell you, on a personal and a professional basis, that it really means a lot to be able to work with people that are that dedicated. And their departments from day one were ready to go. Sometimes I had to slow them down. But honestly, it's a privilege to be able to work with that caliber of people. So I just wanted to say that upfront. I know our principals feel the same way in my discussions with them. What I'd like you to do, if you have a booklet in front of you, if you turn to page 18, that would be our transportation section of the CIP. And you will see the year-to-year expenditures, projects that are, or excuse me, vehicles that we propose to purchase according to our 15-year replacement cycle. I also want to reiterate to you, or emphasize to you, that every year, we're very cognizant when we compare one fiscal year's expenditures to another, we go through quite a process to ensure that we are getting the most bang for the buck that we can. So I know you already know that, but I want the public to understand that we do a lot of work to ensure that we're maximizing what we have been blessed to have. So this time, I'd ask Mr. Forrest to come on up. This is an official hot seat, by the way. And I don't know why they put him next to me, but at any rate, I'll try to behave. And Mr. Forrest, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Obviously, as Don had mentioned, what we are requesting through the CIP for the coming year is to really just try to maintain the replacement cycle that we need to maintain with our bus fleet. We are currently at that 15-year mark as far as replacement of our buses. And what we have requested will keep us at that 15-year mark as far as the replacement schedule. That is the big item, obviously, in our CIP. We also have additional requests for some cameras, for camera replacement on our buses, and then some bus engine replacements. But the big ticket, of course, is the bus purchases and trying to keep and maintain that 15-year replacement cycle.
Ms. Shelley, please.
I was just wondering, though, about with buses. Have we considered even smaller, say, vans to transport our students who have to go to more distant places for special education services versus the smaller school buses? Would those be less expensive? Or even, I know some divisions use, have, like, division cars, per se. Would that, something like that, has that been looked at?
We, I think, as a department, have been advocating the use of buses versus cars, just because of the liability associated with cars. We have purchased the type A buses, which is built on a van chassis. And in the CIP, there is mentioned one type A purchase. And we typically use those for that transit going outside of the county when we have to transport to Richmond or up into Stafford or what have you. We'll try to use the type A buses. They are a little more fuel efficient. But the vans, there are limitations as far as what you can do with vans. We can't utilize 15-passenger vans. You can utilize 12-passenger vans, but they, there's liability associated with that, of course.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure. Dr. Martin.
When I was reading through this, and one of the things, I didn't see anything on the GPSs. Is that in our current, this year's budget?
Yes, sir.
Because it's not in the outlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blain.
I'd just like to put this into context just briefly. We drive, our buses every day run about 29,000 miles, I understand. Is that pretty accurate?
Pretty close, yes, sir.
Still, so when those buses, over the 29,000 miles over 15 years, that's probably a reasonable time to replace them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Mr. Blain, please.
The cameras, is that, somebody's got their mic on besides myself. Is the cameras, is that for the inside? Are we talking outside for the cars? And do all the buses have them? All interior?
All interior cameras, yes, ma'am.
Do all of our buses, what's the number that's going to have cameras?
All of our buses have them.
Everything?
Every.
We just need to purchase more?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Forrest. The, what do we do with the replacement buses? When we roll, bring the new buses in, what happens to the old ones?
With the buses that we're surplusing out?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking? We have a trade-in system that we've set up with Sonny Merriman, one of our vendors. They will purchase the buses back from us. Also, we're polluting this year to go out on GovDeals, one of those other sites, to see what kind of value we might potentially get through them. I think through Sonny Merriman, at the completion of the service here in Spotsylvania County, they've been giving us, I think it's $1,500 per bus, which is about as good as you're going to get.
So, I mean, so about $1,500, where does that, does that money, what does it come back to? How does it come back to the division?
It just discounts off the purchase.
It's discounted off the purchase of the bus?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. And the other question I had is, on the cameras, it has there $100,000. How many cameras is that purchased?
That would be 40 cameras.
Forty cameras?
Forty-camera systems. When I say cameras, I'm talking about, we have a camera on the bulkhead at the front, bulkhead in the back. We have a camera over top of the driver's area that captures the loading, the entry doors. And we've started putting a camera mid-bus.
Okay.
And it's about $2,500 for a system.
$4,500 per system?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred per system?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any other questions of Mr. Forrest? Please contend.
I think that's pretty much all I have.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Pete Sacari and Dr. Strike up to discuss any questions or answer any questions you might have about the technology component of the CIP. One thing I will say, that you will see safety measures included throughout the technology CIP. Well, you'll see that throughout every aspect, transportation, technology, and maintenance. You're going to see most of it in technology and maintenance. That's one of the reasons that you may wonder why the fiscal year '17 totals are a little higher. In fact, a little higher, to say the least, than fiscal year '16. But without further ado, I'll get to the experts here and let them answer the question.
Good afternoon. You'll see that since the first bond, I believe it was back in '06, '07, we've used that to purchase infrastructure, hardware, computers, and things. We've continued that on. You'll also see that in '17, there's more personalized learning devices that we've started to add in to this, as we look to do more with the personalized learning for our students. So that's where you'll see some of the new line items that haven't been in there in some previous years.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Shelley.
I noticed, and I can't remember where I saw it, but there was something with elementary, the elementary schools wireless?
Yes. The upgrade.
Upgrade?
Yes.
Because weren't they just done just a few years ago? It already needs to be upgraded?
That was, it was done, I believe it was five or six years ago. We're pretty much on a five-year rotation with most of the hardware. So it's actually, we're back to where we are having to do some upgrades. And with the more devices that we bring in that connect wirelessly and things, so it's also an enhancement of that infrastructure.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And then, just looking at the replacement costs for the computers, like $602 each. And the tablets or laptops, $1,489. Is that, a tablet or a laptop is $1,489 each? I'm looking at, say, at '15, page 21. Okay.
I don't see, um...
Page 21.
So FY '15, even FY...
FY '17 has $602 each for replacement computers.
Yes.
And then if you go down to FY '18, it has 26 each replacement table...
Oh, okay, okay.
Tablet.
Yes, those were, those were different computers than the, just the sort of the standard that we purchased for replacement in the laptop carts and things of that nature. So it was a different, it's a different device, is why there's that price difference between the two.
Dr. Martin.
It just seems like a lot for, that's why I was asking, because that just seemed like a steep price. Okay, thank you.
Shelley, are you done? Okay.
Can, on the FY '17, where you have 1.3 million for the multimedia instructional solution?
Yes.
Can you explain a little bit what that entails?
Sure, that replaces the interactive whiteboards that we currently, that we purchased starting back in 2006. Looking at the life cycle of those, we're having a large number break. When they were first purchased, they were put in with a projector mounted in the ceiling, and then an active whiteboard, the smartboards. The new technology is more interactive projector, where it's sort of an all-in-one component. So it replaces both of those two devices instead of just hanging another smartboard on the wall. And so that's, that's what that is.
What's, what piqued me was one at 1.3 million, so I...
Right, we basically took the numbers that had been purchased back in 2008 and '09, and at a cost of roughly $2,000, the number to replace, how many were purchased at that time? And when we initially wrote this up, we weren't sure if it was going to also include a, you know, if there was a sound system that would be part of that sort of bundle and things like that. So we didn't have necessarily a whole package at that time when we, when we wrote this. So we just took the numbers that we had and put it in as a one lump sum, as opposed to an individual price and then the number that we would purchase. Because we don't exactly know how many, we don't replace them until they break.
One more.
It's a very good question. And because we are actually still currently identifying exactly what will replace interactive whiteboard, because the technology is so quickly changing, that we actually are right now collaborating with instruction on what classroom learning environments would receive certain types of multimedia, interactive technologies, because these interactive projectors may not work in a school like Battlefield Elementary School, which is an open classroom. That's going to require a different solution. So it was more, Dr. Meyer, an issue of just budgeting for the amount that we projected would need to be replaced. We can't right now identify specifically what that solution is for those that will be replaced. So we put it in as one whole number, based on the number that was purchased with the previous bond for that corresponding year. That's why you see the increase from FY '16 in the multimedia instructional solution to FY '17.
Dr. Martin, are you done? You done? Mr. Twig.
Yes. The 1.3 million, what's the estimated amount of replacement units? Or how many schools are covered, given that amount? You mentioned you correlated it with the last purchase X years ago, but what are we looking at, generally speaking?
That should take care of over 800 classrooms.
Which is how many schools? Half?
No, that would be more than half.
More than half?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And if, if $9 million was hard to muster for this one application, for this fiscal year, what is the generality on essential? Or you need it as a lifeline, as opposed to just offering up replacements at an estimated cycle or time? Or it may not even be a fair question, but I propose it. You know, is everything here, you must have $175,000 to, for intervention mass solution for FY '17? Or in theory, it'd be a, like to have, or in theory, you need a piece of that as a minimal for this one fiscal year's application?
I'm going to...
Are you asking if it's mission essential for this particular fiscal year? Is that what you're asking?
That's another way to formulate it.
Yeah, and I was just going to, as I'm hearing the question, it may be good, because I think when we talk generally about needs and essentials, that's what's being presented, generally. But I think if what we could do is maybe talk about if we don't, if we don't do certain things, what does that mean for next year? What is the reality if we do not keep up with a certain replacement? Or maybe select some items and provide some examples of if we were not able to follow through on this for FY '17, what would that do in terms of impact to our students?
To our students?
To our students in classrooms?
Okay. So I didn't understand the question, because I honestly thought we were still on the multimedia solutions. So I apologize. But if you look at, let's just take the RTI, that acronym RTI that's in FY '17. It's part of our strategic plan and part of our teaching and learning goal-setting for the school division to respond to the students that fit in a specific tier, along with our response to intervention process and program. We have forecasted the need to increase current RTI solutions that we initiated over the last five years. So when you look at RTI mass solution for middle school, elementary, and high school, these are digital solutions or applications that are tied to specific devices that without that, we cannot expand that targeted personalized learning to students in elementary, middle, and high school. So we projected that in the bond. In my opinion, it is, it's a must-have for what we're doing with instruction.
And no disrespect intended here. And I know you're quality people, providing a quality assessment. That's a given, and I'm not taking away from that in the least, just so you know. I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Dr. Baker.
I think it's, again, a good opportunity, given that question, to talk about the intention behind personalized learning, because I know that the school board is familiar. Many in the public are aware of school divisions that go quote-unquote "to one-to-one" solutions. And in many cases, that means one-to-one devices. In many places, that would be take-home device attached to one student. Could you explain in terms of how the capital improvement plan is working in conjunction with our attempts to create a one-to-one environment as much as possible to better engage students and help them to achieve at higher levels? I've kind of said it, but now if you could then expand upon that in terms of how these particular purchases, because I think it's a good question, because it could be that we're just simply adding volume of technology that is there at the disposal or the use of a variety of folks. But if you could speak to how we work with instruction to ensure that from classroom to classroom, it is targeted to the curriculum and the student learning needs.
So we're fortunate enough, Pete and I are fortunate enough to be part of instruction. And we've worked very hard under Dr. Baker's leadership and also Mrs. Carol Flannard to actually investigate the research, the practice on one-to-one solutions in school divisions. And the research is spotty at best, in terms of, does it actually improve student learning? So we took a different approach as a collaborative instructional team. And that was to look at where, where we can actually supply digital learning resources and targeted intervention to specific student populations, or particular grade levels, or particular subjects. And really, in the case of what we've been able to do with the bond, when a student comes to our school, our vision is that every student, and all of our students, would have access to a device if it was deemed necessary for them to access or maximize their, maximize their learning on a device. That doesn't necessarily mean that they carry a device back and forth to school, like you've read about. What it does mean is we have, we are attempting to allocate, as we roll this next bond out, a very targeted, measured, evidence-based deployment of digital resources at the right time for all students. So our visits this fall, that I know all of our school board members participated in, you saw device pilots. And most of those cases, those were not one-to-one initiatives. Those were devices shared by two or three students. We do have several one-to-ones, because those teacher leaders in our school division are leading and supporting the decision-making that's going on in instruction with the data they're collecting on their action research projects, with what they need and what they can do in terms of supporting our skills for 21st century learning. And those skills are identified in our teaching and learning framework and in our strategic plan. So we actually are not looking at putting a laptop in every student's backpack necessarily, but making sure that those devices and those resources are deployed and specifically targeted at what we know we need to do in instruction.
And I know there may be another question, but I, and I thought that was a really good explanation. I want to kind of put a point on that at the end, exclamation point, in that we made the decision a few years ago. And again, I certainly think that one-to-one solutions and the way they're being implemented in a lot of innovative ways do improve student learning. I think it is hard to pin down research on, if you just put the device in the hand, there's a lot of other variables that are going to impact whether the student is learning or not. But our goal, especially with resources being scarce, that we need to maximize those resources. And so the focus has been to, first, to identify what are the instructional outcomes and objectives that we want our students to get crystal clear about those before putting a device as the answer to achieving that objective. So I think first comes the instructional objectives, then come the delivery systems to try to help our students achieve that. And we don't believe we've arrived, but that is the direction that we're going in.
So it's a very calculated approach. We do have several device pilots that are one-to-one. And in my mid-year observations of those one-to-one initiatives, you're seeing a lot of that need in the higher-grade level, secondary level, English writing, for example. When writing becomes a big part of that process, of course, it's K-12, but writing for a secondary student in 10th and 11th, 12th grade is really critical. And you might see in the future some targeted interventions. This was specifically articulated as a response to intervention solution in high school, elementary, and middle. And we were looking at mathematics and English specifically to expand what we already know. We've got clear evidence that we really can expand on what we've done successfully so far.
And you've extrapolated that out over the next several years as well?
Yes, you'll see that in the future.
Thank you. May I ask another question?
Ms. Warren, oh, go ahead.
I come up with another one. Could you give me a brief yet explanation of replace wireless infrastructure? What's that, what does that constitute, perhaps, in general form?
That constitutes access points in all the schools, upgrades, and also additional, including switches and PoE switches, which actually provides power to the access points from, rather than having to plug it into an outlet in the wall. It actually, because it's through the Ethernet cable that connects it to the network.
And with unlimited virtually internet capacity or capability?
Maybe, not unlimited, but definitely increased, yes, increased. And as we also continue to increase our bandwidth, so we're able to support all the devices that are coming into the division.
Thank you very much.
This follows up on the previous question that you're answering. I admire on every level what we're trying to do to get devices into, whether it's a one-on-one hand or in groups. What are we doing to combat a lot of the people in my district? That even if we gave them a device to take home, doesn't mean they have internet access. So what are we doing to help that?
I've been asked that many times over the years. And I was asked that as recent as this afternoon in a conversation with Mrs. Carol Flannard. In terms of accessibility from our homes in your district and some of our other areas across the school division, this, this particular bond cannot provide access into homes. In fact, it's not, it's not our role in education to do that. There are some, we're not the only school division that has accessibility issues that relate to residential areas that don't have high-speed, good bandwidth solutions to their homes. And there are innovative solutions being discussed. And we're at that point where we're just in discussions about those. And, and so right now, that is not in the bond. That is more of a, just another body here in the county that would be making those decisions on that.
I also want to, and I think the discussions on how to improve that situation, I think, are ongoing, even in collaboration with county resources and county processes in working with the Cable Commission. And I know that there are, you know, we're collaborating to try to see if we can impact that for our more rural areas. However, I do know that on a daily basis, what's not captured necessarily, I think, in Dr. Strike's response, because we are trying to figure out how can we maximize the use of technology 24/7 as a, as a learning tool. I think that one of the ways that I think it happens naturally, organically, is that what our students need, we make sure that they have. And so if we can't provide it via technology, then if you've seen us go more to texts and resources that are print, but not necessarily one per child, for those students who do not have that access, we certainly will provide them with the print resources. The other issue in terms of transportation to and from school, I know that all of our schools would offer opportunities before and after school. And in fact, we've even pursued some grants in some of our rural areas, not all successfully yet, but to try to extend... all successfully yet, but to try to extend the learning day at school. I think other things we're going to have to continue to look at is how to not regionalize completely, but identify places in the community that we can more proactively guide students and families to, who want to engage beyond the school day, whether it's our libraries, or we know that some folks might even come into our parking lots. And I think the use of mobile devices, particularly the iPhones and cellphones, is another way that many of our students are able to find hotspots and do that. So, there's lots of different things that I know are helping us to get closer, but it remains a challenge, what you shared.
Mr. Blaine and then Mr. Twig.
We recently had some opportunity to go and visit schools, and one of the things that we were exposed to was the flipped classroom. And that very important ingredient in the flipped classroom is exactly what we're talking about. The kids have, when they're home, an opportunity. I'd like to suggest, one, we need to have a survey done to really know what the answer to the question that was just asked. Where do we and where do we not have access from? So, we're all guessing at that, and I think it would be helpful for us to know. The other thing is, I'm, if I have a concern, it's because of the flipped classroom, and the, because that gives students a chance to do studying at home and in the classroom utilize what they've learned at home, and the teacher's able to elaborate on it, is basically is my understanding of what we're doing there. So, it's important for them to have something at home, and I would be concerned that we have enough equipment so that teachers who would like to get into a flipped classroom situation have the capability to do that with the necessary computers and so on. The other area is, we mentioned laptops here, and I know that we have computer labs in schools, and one of the reasons, my understanding has been, that you need the computer labs for the SOL testing in this, every year. And one of the reasons that we needed the computer labs is that Pearson had not made the testing available for the tablets and other types of things. I know that the state has requested Pearson to make that adjustment, and I wonder, have they completed that yet or not? And if not, how do we avoid buying more tabletop computers, which take space? If you have to, we're going to have more students before long, and if we could free up more classroom space, get rid of computer labs as much as possible, I think it would save us some money in the long run. And I just wonder, that's a general statement of the problems, and I see you shaking your head. Does this proposal here take those considerations into account to see that we're going to have enough equipment?
Yes, a lot of these are just replacements for what we currently have. Many times when we replace computers, we're not necessarily replacing desktops with desktops any longer, we're replacing desktops with laptops, which gives you a lot more flexibility of moving them, putting them on carts, and things like that. A number of schools have actually gotten rid of their labs altogether, and those have been, over the years, replaced with laptops already. And schools do what fits best for them. Some schools break those up and put a certain number in different classrooms. Other schools keep them on a cart, where the lab actually comes to your classroom, because you bring in a cart full of laptops, as opposed to bringing your class to a different lab. So, we've had many schools actually already start to break those up. Pearson is in the process right now of making it so you can do testing on things like iPads and Chromebooks and things. So, they're giving you a number of different options of different devices that you can use in order to take the SOL tests.
Are they available now, or will they be this year?
I don't know if they're going to be available this spring. If it's not this spring, it's next spring, and I just, off the top of my head, don't recall the date of when that is. But it is, it's been moving forward. I know there's been testing and things of that nature to sort of, as a pilot, to see where they were. So, we're definitely moving in that direction, that a number of different devices within the building will be able to be used in order to do the testing.
If there is a need for space, which at least I anticipate with, over the next several years, is part of your thinking about the replacement of the desktops to speed that up on purpose, so that you can clear, open up several more classrooms?
We really only replace on that five-year cycle. So, we don't just say, okay, you have desktops, let's take those out a couple of years early. We just don't have the funding to do that. So, we really stay pretty strict, or, you know, on our five-year, for our computer replacements. And five years is, while it's a long time, especially for the laptops that are being used by students and the constant wear and tear that they get. So, we don't really speed that up, but as it comes up, and it varies school to school as to when their replacements for particular machines are ready, we definitely sort of really push towards more of a laptop, more portable device, as the replacement device.
Just for the public, a lot of us who grew up and weren't familiar with computers, last time I was in a barber shop, a man brought his two-and-a-half-year-old in, and while he's sitting there, the father gave the son his iPhone to work with, two-and-a-half-year-old kid. Now, that tells us something. I mean, the kids are growing up with them, and the sooner they have them, the better. What can I, what can I say? Thank you.
In closing, Mr. Blaine, our principals provide input on what their particular culture wants and needs. It's not something that technology, instructional technology decides on our own. We do that collaboratively. I will tell you that most of our school leaders are asking for more and more portable, mobile, tablet-type devices. So, I want to footnote everything by saying that in certain labs that you may still see in schools, they are dedicated possibly to business labs or CTE labs, and because those particular students and teachers require certain applications, they may, for whatever reason, choose to spec a desktop. So, there are labs dedicated to those CTE classrooms or programming classrooms, still.
I'm not against desktops, to be sure. But are you, how do you respond when teachers say, you know, I'm ready for a new set of these things? You can't just say, yes, I know, but...
Well, I respond with, how are you going to use them, and what teaching and learning objectives do you, do you plan to accomplish with them? And honestly, that, the answers to that are increasingly becoming more focused on student learning, and that's where we started with our responses to you, that when I began and joined Spotsylvania County Schools with the first bond, it was about the stuff. It was about having stuff in the classroom, and it was an add-on to what you did instructionally. And now, there is more, there are more and more teachers that are very specific, this is what we would like to do with it. And as you can observe as a board member, the progress of these device pilots and the data that's being collected and the learning that's going on across all levels, with our teachers, our teacher leaders, with us, with our leadership here at Central Office, what's being identified is, there is a direct link to connecting kids with the right instructional resources and pairing that with the right delivery of a device. So, we're beginning to learn that. So, it's going to be harder and harder for me to come back and ask the question, what do you plan to do with it? Because teachers are learning very quickly. If we did not have our bond, we would not be able to respond to any of this. We just don't have the local funding in our technology, instructional technology, to do any of this.
Thank you.
Ms. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I just want to chime in. I don't have a question for you, but I want to make a comment. When I moved here in 2003, I met with Ms. Cunningham, who's the principal of Lee Hill Elementary, that fall. And after introducing myself, the first question out of my mouth, and she'll tell you this, I mean, hands down, was, where is your technology? So, I want to point out that from the time I stepped foot in this county till today, we have moved leaps and bounds. And just as close as, or as recent as I would say seven years ago, we had a technology island, and we had an instruction island. They were very much silos to themselves. Something under new leadership over the past few years, including Dr. Redinger and Dr. Baker, we have done, is we've been able to marry the two. And you really hit it home when you said, it's not about having something as a supplement in the classroom anymore, it's about learning from the piece of technology that's either in their hand or in front of them. I have little ones. I have second graders. I absolutely expect technology in their classroom as a parent. I expect it from my constituents, and I will continue to fight for more and more, but I have to say, I commend, the technology department is not who it was when I moved here. It is amazing what has happened in our classrooms. And the kids that I have in second grade, if you could compare their classroom to what mine, who graduated in 2009's classroom, looks like when he was in second grade, it's unbelievable. So, we want to stop and remember, not only are we doing the right thing, let's keep going, but we've come a long, long way.
And thank you very much, but also the fact that, I just have to reiterate, if we didn't have the bond and the creativity that's been afforded us through the bond, we wouldn't be able to do the things we're doing.
And that's our community.
Right.
The community should be credited with putting this in the kids' hands. And the fact that we're sitting here talking about things like, well, how do we get it in all the kids' hands? That's where we should be, and that's where we need to keep going. But we can't forget that the community is, this community...
They voted for this.
That's right. And they put it in these hands. But what we were able to do as a division, and when I say we, it really wasn't the school board, it was the cabinet, the staff, and teachers, and paras, and everyone involved, they were able to get the pieces and implement it. But marrying the piece of technology and instruction, I don't know how we missed it for so long years ago, but when I got here, those two things were separate entities. And we are so much more successful as a division today, because we married the two. The kids are so much more successful. But at the end of the day, they're more ready for college, military, community college, or the workplace. And that's what we need to be worried about today. So, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blalock. Dr. Meyer and then Mr. Twig, I'll give you another opportunity.
I need to shift a gear, because I really wanted to focus on instruction. But the last item on several years has the safety and security upgrades, about five and a half million. Can you go into more depth as to what that is entailing? Because I know we have to emphasize our safety and security, but, you know, one line doesn't say it.
No. And actually, I'll be honest with you, with that, we're still getting our vision for that. That ties in with the whole safety and security that also goes with maintenance. We're working very closely with maintenance, and as they start, continue to move forward, sort of with those projects, we're tied in, because what we don't want is, we don't want sort of two complete different systems. So, as they move forward, say, for example, with cameras and things of that nature, we want to make sure that everything can be integrated together in order to best maximize the safety and security for the schools. So, that's actually still in a work in progress. So, when we put it in, we sort of had our goal number, and then it was a matter of, we knew we couldn't do everything in one year. So, we broke out, as we look at the projects, or potential projects, over the three-year period.
I think the vision for safety and security, so we're paused, and we understand that within FY '17, within FY '17, we're going to be brought in to, I'll make an analogy to our partnership with Instruction, we will be partnering with construction and maintenance. And so, the actual quotes and estimates for the safety and security upgrade were, for example, the concept of providing voice-over IP, the concept that our school-level leadership on their cellphone would be able to lock down every door in their building at the click of a cellphone. That is a highly sophisticated system that some of our Virginia school divisions or schools have experimented with. So, we're in our planning and architectural design phase, but we're actually in the physical side of how the buildings might change. And then, our investment in that particular, those particular line items, Dr. Meyer, are related to the technology pieces of that. So, Mr. Darden represents us on the committee on that side, and we anticipate something happening in FY '17 regarding that. Does that give you a sense?
That gives me a sense, because I wanted to have some idea.
Right.
So, you've set aside a certain funding over two, and then ending it up on the end of the CIP for initiatives that you're still working on. And I think the concept of, you know, over devices, you already see it at residential applications?
Yes.
I don't know if it's existing at a commercial application, but undoubtedly it's there.
Well, we do know in terms of safety and security, because it's the topic that's all around us in every aspect of our lives right now, we do know that communication, instant communication, and instant global response and teamwork is essential to the technologies that drive safety and security. We use, to project our estimates, we used voice-over IP and the idea that there would be a mobile solution for school-level leadership and any other leadership that needed it in our organization. What that will actually be will depend on the latest technology and what comes up in terms of specs. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Mr. Twig.
Thank you. And I certainly hope that your priority will become restructuring the entrances to our facilities. In my not-so-humble view, that is the primary defense, security-wise. And I think, would think that that should be a priority as we decide how we're going to spend these monies, if, and as appropriated. And then, focusing back to Aaron's good question, Dr. Baker and I, I made reference to that same point, I think the first, but if not the first, the second time, we had a lengthy conversation back in November. I have a country southern district as well, where we have a lot of non-internet families, homes, too many people without computers. And I know there are a number of those in my district, probably hers as well. But I, for one, appreciate everything you folks are doing, have done technology-wise, and the IT group has the infrastructure laid for such a project that I firmly believe is operational. And I will certainly be taking that on personally with the administration after we get budget issues resolved. I think the time is now to address that issue, and I think we have plenty of resources and plenty of administrators to help guide that path. But appreciate everything you've done, and I don't see any lagging from the technology and the IT piece. So...
Thank you.
And I personally am acolyte-ing, grateful for that. So, that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Dr. Baker?
I just want to, as it might be a natural segue, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Braswell, but I think your question or comment regarding the entrances, I think, actually segues well into when Mr. Hockaday comes up and talks about, again, the partnership that technology and maintenance have had in terms of the planning. We've already done many entrances, but we continue to look at that piece, and I think he can address that. So, since Mr. Uppercough is kind of calling people up like they're coming up to do a testimony before the court, you know, because he goes, I'll now call up, I'll turn it over to Mr. Braswell so he can let Mr. Uppercough do his thing.
I solemnly swear.
Thank you for your presentation, and I just want to assure Mr. Twig that we all are Southerners. Mr. Uppercough, if you could please have...
Sure. Mr. Hockaday, I think the public demands your presence at this point. And I would like to say, he can address the, what we're calling the Comprehensive School Security Initiative, and that's exactly what Dr. Baker has mentioned, as well as others, the fact that we are working together across departments with the local sheriff's department, as well as emergency management in this effort, actually facilitated by BCWH, because we don't want to pigeonhole by technology that's going to be obsolete and does not interact, you know, with other systems in place to ensure that our students are safe from the moment they get on the bus to the moment they get home. And so, that is our goal here. Without further ado, Mr. Hockaday, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Will you be referring to any particular page in your booklet that you gave to us?
The maintenance component of the CIP starts on page 25. That's a total by year. And then, you'll see after that, there's a school project by year. And then, you'll see after that, there's a school project by year, as you break down by school, so you can see what's happening by school.
Now that I'm on the witness stand, I'll follow up. To try and add to Dr. Myers and Mr. Twig's question, we wanted to build a platform that our safety and security could ride on, that we know would not become out of date, and we'd be purchasing something over and over again. With technology changing as fast as it is, it's hard to know what camera system, what lock system. All those things play a role together. So, I'm glad that Dr. Baker saw the, had the wisdom to see the time to let us bring somebody in and guide us in this. We went to an architect in an engineering firm that has experience in this, and there, we have a steering group set, meets, and hopefully by, the timeline we've set up, is hopefully by midsummer, we'll have at least a draft of where we're going and the type of equipment to use. I think the thing to remember is, not only did this affect technology and maintenance, but we're also talking about transportation. The abilities out there now for to have a card that a kid can swipe getting on and off the bus, a kid can use in a library, a kid can use for whatever he does, and it goes through all departments. And I think, you know, we would, it's wise to take that opportunity now to look at that instead of looking two years back and say, "Why didn't we do this when we had the opportunity to do that system?" So, all of that, it takes time to explore those opportunities and look at what equipment is available, what technology looks like. Our technology team here has been huge in supporting us, and they play a major role. We can't integrate these systems in the building if we don't have the technology backbone there to support them. So, we have to play, come to the table together to make this happen. And the same note, I will say that, for many years, we have been, maintenance has been working hand-in-hand with 911 and the sheriff's department. We had, at one time, we had an old receiver up there that all of our alarms went into, that dated back to the 80s. And finally, that has met its life cycle. And we've updated that, and we partner with the county as we have all along. And we installed two operating systems there that allows all of our fire emergency alarms to go to. It also gives the county a way for them to then ride on that same operating system and bring their buildings on that same system. They have two network stations there that 911 operators sit in. Instead of looking at numbers that came out on a printer and have to go to a book and figure out what that code was, now you have a screen, you look at it, has a layout, footprint of the building. First responders know where to go, what part of the building that they may, the emergency may be in. So, all this ties in together, and eventually, we want this all to be one system that plays well together. You know, there's vendors out there to offer certain types of equipment. We have to make sure that that equipment will play to work together. As far as the front entrances go, I would like to say that we have several other schools done. We've made changes in the front entrances. We are currently working on Mass Pond, Spotsboro High School, Battlefield, Post Oak, and Spotsie Middle. We started with the elementary schools first. We felt that that was the, they were the most vulnerable, so we wanted to start there. We do have two that we're going to go back and do some more work at, and that is Smith Station and Chancellor Elementary, excuse me. But trying to coordinate that, to get done and not stop our schools in, is, kind of draws the process out. But that is still very much in the forefront. And whatever other questions you may have, I'll try to answer.
Questions?
I was very pleased to hear that you're coordinating in the efforts with the county to the extent, you know, that we have common systems. Does that also include with the 911 radio system? You know, the radios there on the buses, the radios that maintenance uses, you know, for the communications? Are we in that loop as well, because that's a safety, security concern?
We are in that loop, and I don't have all the information on the radio system. I know that John Lynn has been taking the lead on that. But we are very much on the same loop with, you know, have the same channels, disaster tack, and so on and so forth. So, we are, we do have the same equipment, and that is an ongoing process.
Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Chancellor Middle and Chancellor High School are very old. I don't see anything on here for roofs. When were those roofs replaced? I'm just wondering, because I've heard of leaks. And I don't know if it might just be something else, but-
Well, actually, there's different sections that were replaced at different times, because that's a flat roof, valid to system. We do yearly roof inspections, and actually, both of those roofs are still under warranty. So, we're, in the next five years, we're not looking at any major roof replacements there. We have others that are in worse condition, and we need to replace first. So, we did, I don't have the year in front of me, but I think it was five years ago, we did a lot of the work there on the high school side, along with the wonderful skylights that are in that building, and tried to seal those permanently. But at this time, in the next four to five years, we don't have any major roof work there. We have had some reports of leaks. A lot of the leaks in that building have been HVAC leaks, have not been roof leaks.
Okay, and then I know you all are taking care of those as they come. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, again, I appreciate, as the board continues to review the CIP, and I'm sure you can do the count, but the majority of our schools were built in the 20th century. And I think it's important to see that our newest school is coming in on its ninth year, maybe? Eighth or ninth year? And so, though they seem new, our newest, our newest high school is actually 12 years old. And so, with aging facilities, it is important, especially after years of, necessary unfortunately due to the economy, the deferment of many of these projects, that we try to gain some momentum in getting these done, or obviously, the concern is that later on, trying to replace them at another stage will be more costly. So, appreciate Sean and all of those folks identifying these projects.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to also commend our maintenance effort. I see on our CIP, we have refurbishing of stadium bleachers for Chancellor High School. And it brings me back to a time not too long ago, and Ms. Blaylock intimately remembers this, where Cortland High School was just finished playing a regional semifinal, I mean, regional final game against Eastern View. And the activity director noticed that the stadium lights were leaning dangerously to one side. When the inspection was done, it was determined that those stadium lights would have fell. And it could have fell when we had a stadium full of people enjoying a football game. And then, we would have had to deal with something greater than just repairing a light, or spending money to repair a light. We would have been dealing with a significant event in our community where there could have been loss of life or injury of great numbers. And we could have been dealing with liability greater than the dollars and cents that we thought we were going to save on the front end. So, I salute you and your efforts to be proactive in our maintenance effort. A lot of times, it is true that an ounce of prevention prevents a pound of loss. And so, I thank you for what you're doing in that effort.
Thank you, sir.
With that being said, is there any other questions, Ms. Blaylock?
Just you and your team this week. I can't tell you how much we appreciate it, taking care of our buildings and making sure our kids got in safe today. Thank you.
Well, I'm fortunate to have a good team working for me, and under good leadership by Dr. Uppercow, so.
Thank you, Dr. Hockaday.
I would like to point out, he is not a doctor.
On that note, honorary doc, will you continue?
I do like to operate, though. At this time, I'll turn things over to Ms. Stombach, and she will be able to review the debt service. Thank you.
Thanks. In addition to the handouts that you provided this evening behind your agenda, you had two colored sheets. The top one is the summary of the CIP, the proposed CIP plan. The second page is the one that I want to go over briefly, as it relates to debt service on the CIP. The projected debt service budget, as you got at the last board meeting and the superintendent's recommended budget, is $25.9 million in FY17. And that includes payments on principal and interest on the bonds that have been borrowed, or will be borrowed, to support the capital improvement projects, as well as a little bit of money for some administrative fees that the bank requires. That spreadsheet gives you some detail and projects out the changes in debt service on the proposed CIP, FY17 through FY21. I'm actually going to work from the right and work backwards across the page to the left. The third column from the right is the white column that says to project the debt with CIP. You'll see on the second row, which is FY17, the $25.9 million figure that is in our budget right now. That corresponds to the $2.7 million increase over our budgeted debt service in the current year. Okay? The impact on the borrowing for the FY17 projects, so the bonds that we will borrow this summer to support next year's capital improvement plan, will cost us roughly $3.2 million in additional debt service. And the reason that it's only a $2.7 million increase is because our existing debt that we have on our prior borrowings is decreasing by $500,000. Okay? So the net impact is $2.7 million increase, even though the cost of the CIP borrowing will be $3.2 million. The green block in the center of the page shows you the impact of the additional debt service per year on each one of those borrowings. The interest rates are given to us by County Finance. The FY17 rates are 2% for technology bonds, 2.75% for transportation bonds, and 3.75% on the maintenance bonds. So they're actually amortized over different terms, depending on the use of the money. They are 20-year bonds, but they're amortized at different, for different terms. The out-years, FY18 through FY21, are figured at a higher interest rate. They calculate those rates based on what we borrowed this past summer, what their experience is, and also the advice that they get from their bond counsel. So we use their rates. We have the same projections as County Finance. Existing debt, which is the fifth column from the left, $22.7 million is existing debt. That relates to 26 bond issues that we have before we borrow this summer for the FY17 capital improvement plan. Going from our last payment, we've got $50,000 that we're paying this year on the 1995 C issuance through last year's, last summer's borrowing, the 2015 GO bond. So our existing debt is $22.7. Based on the FY17 budgeted CIP, what we have proposed is additional $3.2. So our projected debt service budget is going to be $25.9. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, look at a- 2.02, Ms. Gaines and her staff?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. What we want to do now is switch gears from the CIP booklet. And you have a 100-page document of FY17 highlights. I want to draw your attention to page three, in terms of revenues, and just a few points we want to make on this piece here. And I'll give you a moment to pull that together. Look at page three for me, and you'll basically see that we do have five main revenue sources. When you look at state funds, it does make a 48 percenter of revenue. When you look at county funds, about 42%. When you look at 16 to 17, you will see a $4 million increase in state revenues. And this is great news. I did go back and look at where we were last year, and potentially, how we were in this biennium. Over a four-year period, the school division could potentially receive $16 million more in state revenue. That basically equates to $4 million a year, which has been huge, and that has allowed us to be able to do the pay raises. However, if you look at where we are for 17, in getting $4 million, knowing that we had a gap of $12.6 million, what does that gap really mean? Before any additional students walk into our school, you have a gap. Mandatory cost is $4.9 million. Then if you look at debt service that Dr. Uppercow had alluded to, is this something about these meetings? That basically gives you $7.6 million. So if no other students walk in the door, you take a revenue number of 4.7, back that out of mandatory cost and debt service, you have a gap of $2.9 million. When you look at the other areas, federal funds increasing by 2.3%. If you look at other funds increasing by 2.9, and then again, the loans and bonds. So overall, the gap is 12.6. And the goal now begins to see, how can we bring that gap down? But what we want to do this evening, we want to walk you through the rationale. What are some of the increases in instruction? Maintenance, transportation, et cetera. So we want to first start off, if there are no questions on revenue, there you go. All right.
Ms. Blaylock, and then we'll go with Ms. Graham.
Okay, go back over the part where you project the state might give us that kind of, you know, I had a flashback of the stimulus package. And it was great, but you just kept thinking, "It's not going to be there next year." And that was the problem with it. So, is this a completely separate thing? I mean, how do you, talk to me about what makes you feel this way? And is it something that you think will be sustainable?
Okay. So if you reflect back to fiscal year 15 and 16, over that two-year period, we basically received about $6 million. So that's a good trend. When you actually go back and look at, let's say, we're going to get $131 from the state. I went back and I looked at 2008, we got $1.128 million. So really now, we are above 2008, which is good from a state perspective. Then if you look at where we're projecting for 17 and 18, this year, an additional $4 million. Next year, potentially, an additional 5.6. That's how I came up with $16 million over a four-year period. And if you're able to save $4 million constantly, sustainable, then that is good news.
Yeah.
So we need to see the same in terms of other revenue sources as well.
Yeah, you and your finance team, definitely one of your strengths is planning well.
Yes.
And then that served, as you saw, as years went on with that stimulus money, other divisions, what they had to do, and we were prepared, so. Thank you for that rationale.
Ms. Graham?
In the revenue section, there is a 48.2% increase in loans, bonds, et cetera. What is that stemming from?
Okay, that is basically stemming from the presentation that you just heard from staff in terms of increases in maintenance projects, technology, and transportation. Whenever you have those increases in expenses, there is a corresponding revenue source. So that means we would have to go out, and we would have to borrow those funds in order to make those purchases. We have heard some other good news in terms of the House and the Senate. Right now, when you look at the increase coming from the state of about $4 million.
Still on page three?
Still on page three. Still on page three. There's about $690,000 that right now is restricted. It is entitled "Additional Instructional Positions," and what they're wanting us to do is to hire an additional employee for each one of our schools, right now at the elementary level, but they are going to give us flexibility. According to the House, they want to be able to give us the same amount of funds, but give us flexibility. What I'm hopeful is that with those positions, they may allow us to use some of that to go towards potentially a pay increase, because that's one of the priorities as well that's in the superintendent's budget that was presented on January 11. They will have crossover at the state level between February 11 and February 12. By that time period, we'll get an additional indication if the school divisions will be given greater flexibility. But right now, of that $4 million, they're saying $690,000 must be used for additional instructional positions. And what they're trying to do is to make up for many years ago when they cut many of the positions. So that's one of the governor's initiatives that we want you all to be aware of.
And that's coming from the state?
From the state.
So the local government couldn't change that? That would be something we would have...
We would be bound. Yeah. That's right.
Mr. Blain? He didn't have anything? Any other questions? Mr. Baker, Dr. Baker?
I think that we are seeing, again, ever so slowly, the state trend in funding to go up. Obviously, we're still not at the level that we were pre-recession. One thing that, just in terms of numbers, it's very simple for me to do in my head, but I know that for the majority of the school board, trying to maintain annual step and pay increases for our staff has been an established priority, not only for one given year, but to sustain and to begin to build that capacity and have that be a part of the annual budget. As you can see from what has been shared with you, both in my presentation and then tonight, that essentially equates to about $5 million additional each year. So you receive, four years from the state, essentially $16 million. Four years of the pay increase is $20 million. So we're not able to keep up in terms of at least state funding with that, and as our local has remained relatively flat. That also would make it difficult for us to be able to sustain any additions to our budget. We would be back in the position, as you know, of reallocating, but not only reallocating, but having to reduce bottom-line expenses just to meet our mandatory costs.
Add on to what Dr. Baker just shared, when you look at the additional instructional positions, whenever we receive monies from the state, you normally have a local match. So how it happens is if you don't accept those funds, then you don't, if you don't hire those positions, you don't receive the funds. But if we do make a decision to accept the state funding, hire the individuals, there is a local match component to that as well. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Moving on to 2.03, operating expenditures. Dr. Baker?
On January 19, when I shared our budget proposal with the school board, I had the opportunity to highlight, from a broad perspective, a high level, that our budget is integrated with and targeted towards our strategic plan, particularly in the areas of teaching and learning and the learning environments for our goal number three, and obviously, our mission and vision. For these particular areas, I think our folks are really, you've got in front of you, and will have, if you don't, I think they have in front of them, the different positions that are being added or requested that make up part of that 12.5 million gap. And so they are in instruction as well as in special education instruction. And so I think, starting with those two, I would invite the board really to engage Ms. Flannard, Mr. Wolf, and Ms. Richardson regarding any questions you have about the positions that are listed. What page should I guide them to?
Page 29 and 30.
I know this is not enough positions, but I have a question for special education. In the special education budget, are the, and there was a different, was a different page for special ed numbers, with the funding, the federal funding that we get for special education, what portion of our special education employees, say, staff, our special education staff, are paid for through federal funding versus local funding or state funding? Because I know that we're not getting, and you might have those numbers, Ms. Richardson, but we're not getting enough from special education, from our feds. So what portion of our special education staff is actually paid for through special education funding?
If you look at the total special ed budget, I want to say it's about, the last time we looked, FY15 actual expenses, it's about $34 million. Of that $34 million, I want to say about $4 million or so comes from the federal government. So my educated guess, I'm going to probably say, probably about 71% comes from the locality.
I do have some exact numbers as to what our annual plan covers. We get $4.3 million from federal. For this current calendar year, it's covering the salary and benefits of 38 special ed teachers, 16 paraeducators, two special ed coordinators, one special education program assistant, one technical analyst, one music therapist, one sign language interpreter, 0.45% of our ESOL interpreter, 1.5 members of our parent resource center, and then 0.5 of our parent resource center assistant. That's it.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. Well, thank you. And then, back to the actual positions that are on here, and then looking at the FTEs. We still only have one educational diagnostician, is that correct?
Correct.
So have the school psychologists picked up the testing that the diagnostician would be, if we had more? But yet, we are getting more school psychologists?
Yes, we are. That's what we're asking for.
Okay. One.
One more. Just one more.
Okay.
Ms. Richardson, if you could also share to distinguish between positions that we see as, in terms of need and as far as enhancing, meeting our programmatic needs in our diverse population, but also, we have some compliance challenges, especially related to on-time testing, if you could share that.
Correct. This year is the second year during my tenure here, and I've been here since 2007. So we were under corrective action in 2009, and we're under corrective action now by the Virginia Department of Education. State regulations require us to evaluate all students that are referred for the special ed process with, in 100% of that 65-day timeline, we are currently meeting it at 94.65%. So part of our corrective action plan is to make sure that we add more school psychological staff so that we can meet that regulatory requirement.
Thank you, because that is very important. I know that 65 days. So, okay, thank you.
Ms. Blaylock, and then Ms. Graham, and then Dr. Meyer.
Thank you. I noticed when Dr. Baker presented his budget, and Mr. Wolf, this is probably for you, I'm not questioning where we put staff in schools, but I just couldn't help but notice that high school seemed a little bit on the short end of the stick. Is it because everything else had a need that's greater, or I felt like we didn't put a lot back into the high school level?
We tried to be strategic in where we could ask for staff and where we could make the most impact at this point. So the 10 staff that you happen to see there that is specifically allocated towards middle school is to support a math focus.
Yeah.
And a curriculum focus there.
Yeah, and I saw that, you know, and you can't argue what we're putting back. I mean, that's, you need that, and then elementary got their cafe monitors back. I just felt like high school got nothing. I did. And is that because the needs are, were good there? Is there a place in high school that we're deficient, or, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're...
Sure. When you're, when I had delivered to the board earlier about what the PTR looked at the high school levels and across the core, when you're talking about the CTE courses, most of those are capped by either by workstation or by 20 students allowed to be in the class. So, but what is very obvious is that although you can do a PTR average, we know that there are hotspots across the board. So, again, looking back at where we're trying to project positions at this point, I would look, I'd love to have 10, 20 teachers that we could put with, inside of the high school at every level, but trying to be strategic about what we're attempting to do as a division in regards to our strategic plan, that's where our focus is at this point in looking at math at the middle school level.
Okay.
And just to add to that, Ms. Blaylock, the school counselors that were on the page that Dr. Baker had that were not in the current budget, they were aimed at the high school level.
Oh, are they? Okay, good. And how many positions was that?
I believe it was three.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
I wanted to also piggyback on that, because I think it was a really good observation that there's nothing overt in terms of additional positions at the secondary level, just as my understanding, years of budgeting and being at the secondary level as an administrator, the lion's share of our instructional budget, as it pertains to schools, is secondary instruction. So there are things that you don't see that we have continued to increase, such as being able to have foundational funding to support the IB program, continued upgrades with AP materials. So there's a lot of things that, they're not hidden costs, but they are not overtly built into our gap, but they are increasing supports that we are providing. And I do think that the, I think high school, and this is a legislative piece, I think it is a visionary piece for both our school division and the state level, that we are getting a good sense that there might be a redesign of what high school looks like in our state. And so in terms of adding resources to our current system, we want to be real sure that those investments are going to be sustainable and that they're going to support where we need to be. I hope and envision less of an emphasis on standardized testing at the high school level even than there is now over time, which means we would think about how we add resources or supplement at the high school level differently. And so that's one of the reasons, when we looked at the most immediate needs, the curriculum changes at middle school really do support the high school as far as having students coming to high school, working at a better, higher level in math, and so having the additional staffing there. We also are looking to increase our foreign language opportunity at the middle school level, which will have an impact, we believe, on high school. And I think there was an original, in our original proposal, staff had recommended additional foreign language teachers to support the need for additional sections at the middle school. But that was something that we believed that we could make it next year, but that will be something in the future that we'll be continuing to request more.
I'm really glad you said that, because I did think of that as I was asking the question. I think of Mr. Blain, as he talks about a lot, getting a book in a child's hand early. When they do start kindergarten, either on their level or ahead, there's a better shot at success at their educational career as a whole, just right that minute. So that certainly makes sense, what you're saying, that if we start at that middle school level, that we're setting them up to be even more successful.
Well, and I think probably not, you know, it depends on the questions that you have following, but I know that Ms. Flannard and Mr. Wolf have put together some data that they can share with you that will, when we look at instruction K-12, we don't just look at SOL scores, or when we get to the high school, that's when you have a lot of achievement data that you begin to say, well, we attach all of that achievement data to the high school, whether it be SAT scores or advanced placement scores, and certainly, the high school is in a position in that moment in time, over those period of years, to really help students achieve at higher levels. But all of the learning that they've had up to that point, and when we look at our math, particularly our SAT scores in math, our SAT trend in math has been well below the state for a long time. And we know that we have good math students and great math teachers, and we believe that some of the curriculum adjustments and the supports that we could provide earlier on, particularly in helping our students at all levels to access and be proficient in Algebra I as a foundation, will eventually help us support higher levels of achievement on all of those different metrics.
Dr. Baker, if it's okay, I just handed the board a purple folder that I can walk them through on the information, the data that you referenced. So the first document that you have is course offerings for some of the surrounding divisions, and what our current is, and then what we are in instruction are proposing for next year, which is in alignment with the middle school math teachers. So that's just an FYI document, so that you can sort of see how we align to other areas around us. The second document that you have is a red, blue, and green document, and what this actually shows you is our performance in mathematics that is broken down by grade level. And the division is colored, and the state is not colored. So if you, for example, if you look at the very first row, you'll see that third grade, we received a 73, where the state was 74. So anywhere that you see red, we are below the state. Anywhere that you see blue, we are equal to the state, and anywhere that you see green, we are above the state. And as you go about three-fourths way down the page, you can see our AP math scores, and across the board, we are red. And you can see our ACT and our SAT are across the board red compared to the state or the nation. All indications that, as Dr. Baker was alluding to, that if we could support that middle school math program, it would then support our high school courses and support our students to be better prepared to take and compete at the state and national level.
Well, that certainly backs up putting those positions in there. This is a very good document.
The multicolor document that you have right after that, I'm going to begin with the smaller of the two, and this is elementary. And if you can bear with me for a moment, I'll just sort of guide you through what this document is telling you. In each section is a grade level. So the yellow section is third grade, blue is fourth, and the gray is fifth. And if you look at the yellow section for Spotsylvania County is pink. And when you go over to the column, that's 2014-2015 pass rate, just so you can visually see it, because there's quite a few numbers on the page, Spotsylvania is in black with the asterisk, so you can point it out right away. And you can see in third grade, red is counties that have beat us in regards to that test, and pink is counties that we overtook them in regards to the pass rate. So third grade, you can see that there are some areas, some additional work, and I do want to remind the board that it is a K through three test. I know that many of you are aware of that, but just a reminder that it is a K through three test. But when you start to get to fourth and fifth grade, you can see that we really do start to level out, and we start to get really right in the hunt of other divisions around us. We're at 84, and there's a lot of 84, there's an 85, 85, so we're starting to make some gains. And in fifth grade, you can actually visually start to see that we start to do a little bit better. When you go to the next page, which is sixth, seventh, eighth, Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry, you can start to see, as you move down that, just visually, the increase in red as you start to go down that page. And when we start to look at the SOL trend data in this way, it does allow us to make some, not only curricular decisions, but it allows us to make some budgetary decisions in regards to where our greatest needs are. So that is really, in essence, to answer your question, Ms. Blaylock, why we started to go where we went.
Okay, we're going to go with Ms. Graham first, and then Dr. Meyer.
Back to special education land.
Give me a second to read my notes since we've been on a couple topics since then. What is our number of enrollment students in special education and disability services right now?
Sure. The most official number that I can give you is our December 1st child count. So, that was 2,834 students eligible under IDEA.
And?
2,834.
And what percent increase is that over last year? I know we're higher.
Last year, we had 2,756.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Meyer.
First of all, I want to say thanks to Dr. Baker and his staff because the question that we asked at our, when you presented the budget, when Dr. Baker presented his budget for the 12 new positions that were in there, and you brought the justification of why. Follow-up now would be, how do you intend to deploy, you know, the 10 middle school teachers to directly impact the reds, the red numbers? Do you have a game plan in mind?
Yes, Dr. Meyer, we do. Actually, what we did is we have several scenarios that we have taken into consideration. Some have to do with whether or not the 10 teachers come to fruition. To be very honest, is that we have to have a backup plan just in case so that we are best laid plans, we have to be prepared. But we certainly know that the 10 positions is in the best interest of trying to move forward with the plans that we would need for our students. So, currently, right now, in middle school, we offer math to sixth grade every day. And we have one pilot school at Battlefield Middle where we offer sixth, seventh, and eighth grade every day. The other math courses are not offered every day. And what we are proposing is with the new curriculum, is to have an opportunity to have more math every day across the board at all seven. So, the 10 teaching positions would support having the mathematics every day other than algebra and geometry, but it would allow to have the new courses to be at every day at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, and it would really support all seven across the board.
So, just clarified, I thought Math 6 was the only one that did not see them every day.
Math 6, it sees, Math 6 students go to math every day.
I mean, the, what is not seen every day? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay. Math 7, Math 8, MS 1, MS 2, Algebra, Geometry are all not every day.
Okay, we're trying to get to where they're all going to be an everyday occurrence?
All but Algebra and Geometry.
Got it.
And let me chime in. We want to have the capacity to be able to determine through scheduling alterations that that's what our children need. And I'm saying that, and I'm not just trying to be politically correct, but I know that the alarms get sounded when we, when we have these conversations that we're going to everyday math every grade level next year. And so, I want to make sure that, one, in terms of the messaging here, we believe it's important on two fronts. One, there is a process in place examining our current scheduling at the middle school, and that process is not concluded, and there have not been recommendations that would impact all seven middle schools yet. So, to say that if the 10 positions are, we are somehow able to make that happen for next year, that automatically we go to everyday math in those subjects is not accurate. It would be an inaccurate assumption. What it would do is it gives us the ability to enact that even if it's on a pilot basis in certain schools that believe they are ready to make a schedule like that work, or if later on down the road, we did change our schedules so that seventh and eighth grade math were every day. The other thing it does if we didn't make any schedule changes, and I know those who've been in education a while understand that when you significantly change curriculum or courses, then the learning curve for our teachers is substantial in that first year. And so, even if it was the ability to lower the class sizes and the numbers in some of those classes, it helps our teachers to better individualize that instruction in the first place, even if it's not just every day. So, I wanted to clarify that so that all of us are not receiving emails. I didn't know we were going to everyday math next year. Yeah, that's right.
I'm going to go with Mr. Blaine and then Ms. Grant and then Ms. Shelley.
Sorry, two questions really. First of all, we had, what, four or five schools that were unwatched last, last time around, and they're now accredited, et cetera, which is a real accomplishment. And my understanding is that in several cases, we had provided additional specialized help for those schools to help them. Does, do we, what we have in the proposal here, do we plan to keep that extra help in those schools this year, or are they moving ahead, et cetera?
Just to clarify, Mr. Blaine, there were 10 schools last year that were accredited with warning concerns at the time, and nine have been successful in reaching those. So, I just wanted the public to be aware that it was 10 and we got an A on our response.
I just looked at that the other day.
Oh, no, no worries. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And in regards to the supports that are in place, many of the supports that are in place are really multifaceted in nature, and so they do continue because it is through professional learning opportunities. It begins even with principals and what they receive on a monthly basis. It also begins with our coaching and our job embedded coaching that our teachers participate through PLCs. And so, those opportunities will continue, and I would certainly love to be able to say that we had additional coaching opportunities that we could provide more of our schools, and that is something that we do continue to expand upon. But the actual one-on-one support to get out of warnings, so to speak, was a tiered system that the instruction department created in order to really be very specific on trying to support those schools. And Mr. Wolf and I at the time very much said what was good for the goose was good for the gander, and so we gave that support and that information to all of our schools to hopefully not be in a situation where we're backsliding and having additional schools in some sort of sanction situation.
So, you're saying that you, the structure, going into this new year is substantially equivalent to what we had last year overall so that those schools still have substantial necessary assistance?
As well as I would think that there's also a better understanding of the process itself and making sure that we're really working on the alignment of our written, taught, and tested curriculum and really giving that learning bottom up, top down, and sideways so that we can really make sure that our teachers do have the skill set, that they have an opportunity to learn and grow with each other on what that looks like and how we navigate through. But I would say yes to answer your question.
You've mentioned PLCs, and I've mentioned this myself. I'm just tell you that I've been very impressed at the contribution that that initiative is having in this area for, among other things, where you're getting teachers having to confer along their same level as well as up and down. And I've had a number of teachers comment to me that is really, they're benefiting greatly from it, so my encouragement to continue that. The other question is just routine. You had the cost of 1% COLA. What is the cost of a 1% salary increase roughly?
1.7 million.
1.7?
Yes.
Okay. It's not quite the same as the COLA, and I want it to be. Yeah. Okay.
I have a couple fun five questions. Ms. Gaines, for, when we went over the revenue topic and the $650,000 the state was probably, might may earmark for new teaching positions, is that how we came up with the 10 teachers? Because that magically totals 638.
You're on the audit and finance committee, aren't you? But no, at this time, actually, we have not actually assigned the 690,000 because we're hopeful that we're going to get flexibility. So, we want to wait until the end to make that determination because we don't want to put ourselves in a hole.
Okey-dokey. And the second question is not a lot of funding, just curious how the number comes up. It might be a Mr. Wolf question, the EMS support at high school football games.
Yes, thank you. Based off of some experiences that we had this year, we find it to be imperative to have those funds necessary to go ahead and support our students at the school and not have to wait for a emergency personnel to go ahead and report. We know at the high school level, we do have our athletic trainers, but honestly, they can do so much under the, I guess, depending upon the severity of the issue at that time, but immediate transport of some students, especially during football games, or whatever sport that happens to be, but specifically for football is paramount, so that's why that's there.
Totally agree. I was just curious how that number came up.
It's actually based on trend data and looking at where we are this year projecting for next year. So, that number could change slightly, but we had to use something in terms of a guide.
Dr. Meyer, I had, hold on, I had Ms. Shelley first and then did yourself.
I'm going to go back to the math question. I think it was the 9-10 school year where we switched over to sixth grade math every day, was it that year or the next year? Do we have data on the growth of our students after having, going from every other day 90 minutes in sixth grade to every day for 90 minutes?
It's a great question, but it is a bit convoluted of an answer because the math SOL rigor changed as well. So, we did see an initial gain when the SOLs were the same, but then everything sort of was a do-over. Once the rigor changed and the SOLs changed, then we were also in a learning curve again. Mr. Wolf, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. I do. From a, from a principal standpoint, from when I was out at Post Oak Middle School, my students greatly benefited in sixth grade from going from every other day model to an everyday model. So, it was, it was greatly benefiting for those guys out there.
Wonderful, thank you. And then one more question that kind of relates is for vertical articulation. Do we have our elementary and middle, or a middle and high school math teachers getting together to say, this is what I'm seeing when they're coming from this grade level that maybe to help guide instruction from a higher levels perspective?
From the, for this year, through the sharing best practices that the middle school level happens to employ that they've done over the past couple of years, but high school being part of those discussions, we have centered those individuals, for example, math, at the same high school. So, middle school teachers go to where the high school teachers are to allow for those vertical discussions to go ahead and occur at this point. I would say that on, as part of the, what you saw, what Mrs. Flannard put out at the beginning is about Spotsylvania County current and Spotsylvania County proposed on that sheet, does have a professional learning piece to that about where a student is placed in the understanding about specifically student by student, talk to us about your child, where do you believe that their math should be? The math placement test, it's a part of all of that. Those discussions of having our sixth grade teachers go down and speak with fifth grade teachers to make sure that we are making the appropriate placement before they get into middle school. So, those vertical discussions are occurring, and it's a great thing.
Okay, we have Dr. Meyer.
Kind of a follow-up question to Ms. Grant's. What new staff are tied to the governor's proposed budget? You know, if the governor's proposed budget is requiring us to have new staff, are there any new positions tied to fulfill the governor's proposed budget?
At this point, however, responded to Mrs. Grant is that we have not made a determination. We have not taken, let's say, the additional 47 positions and said these are tied to the 690 because a couple of reasons. Number one, when you're looking at the crossover between the House and the Senate, it appears that we may get some flexibility. Also, we had a question going to Kent Dickey, the Assistant Super Finance, wanting clarification. Do those positions have to be at the elementary level the first year and the second year as secondary, or can they be a mixture? And the response that we've gotten back from him is that there can be a mixture. So, at this time, we have not tied them in the finance department, but Dr. Baker may want to add.
Well, they, it has frankly been confusing, and it has been a discussion that we had all the way up until the final days before we finalized the proposal that I shared with the board. And I, we certainly appreciate the focus on adding additional positions to support the classroom. The problem is when the total amount of funding is not enough to support even your mandatory costs, you could essentially be, we could find those positions from the ones that we're proposing that are in the gap now, we could take however many of those will absorb that amount of funding, we could place them in there. But in order to place them in there, we will have to reduce in other areas potentially. So, that's why the decision was not to earmark any specific positions for that. But I would say that when you look at the list, I would probably put, there's two areas that I think have the best chance if that remains, and again, we hope it does not remain inflexible, but the instructional technology assistance because they're parapositions, and we could fund them all within that, and that gives us that one-to-one technology support person at every one of our schools. The other area would be our special education where, because of some of our compliance challenges, we would use it for that. But the downside is that we still could have to reduce positions even at the classroom to gain the classroom positions.
Oh, Dr. Meyer.
One more follow-up. On the cafeteria monitors, are you looking at 34 positions? Two per elementary?
Correct.
Is what you're looking at. Was it thought there to have always pairs? Or was, did we always have pairs?
Originally, there were 34, and then as, when the economy and the budget became so difficult, then it went down to one, and then eventually it was gone. But it was, in the original model, it was two per elementary school.
Got you. And on the insurance with the dental and the health, are, those are estimates correct or built into the budget?
When you look at the health, that's based on a projection that we did receive from Anthem. They will be providing another projection around March. In terms of the dental, that 15%, that is really looking at actual claims, so that one is probably more solid.
I was trying to see what flexibility was there.
Shelley.
I'm sorry, just a follow-up from Dr. Meyer from the, for the lunchroom monitors. What about middle school? Because I know they used to have them, we used to have them in middle school.
I believe they used to have one, and that was not part of the current proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a follow-up question while we're on the cafeteria monitor? So, is it down that we're going to have two in every elementary? Why would you have two with a population that's, let's say, the size of Berkeley and equally two at Courthouse Road, which is, what, 900? And then one with like three? That makes no sense to me.
They would have two, but the amount of hours that they would have would be different because of the amount of students. So, the amount of students in the cafeteria at one time is still quite large because you are feeding, at Berkeley, you may feed, be able to feed K-1, 2, and 3 all at the same time, but you're not working the amount of hours.
Any other questions? At this point, if there's no objection, we've been going at it for about two hours, and I think it's time to call for a short break. I have 6 o'clock right now. How about 10 minutes after? Is that sufficient? So, we'll take a short break until 10 minutes after the hour.
I just have one general thing for the technology in terms of are we adequately staffed? It's a wide open... It's a wide-open question and I'm not sure you can even answer it, but it just is an ongoing concern I have.
Yeah. I, I think that we would, the addition of the ITAs is one example, I think, of a pressing need because we had tried to use a model where we could extend resources across several schools, but to encourage and support integration on a daily and hourly basis, we want to reduce frustration as much as possible and have someone there on site to help troubleshoot so that we're continuing to use and support students in the classroom with technology. I think that's an example of helping us to be more adequate. I think as you see the ambitious nature and the connected nature of the capital projects, the more that you, and I'll just use the student information system, which has been a very positive thing, but that does, to manage a new system and to roll it out, it takes a lot of folks, a lot of energy. And so, we know that we would always like to have additional capacity there. And then when it comes to our instructional technology resource teachers, those that we want to be at schools, I don't want to speak for every principal, but I think the majority of our building-level leaders, as we talk about one-to-one technology support for students, our principals and many of our leaders, I think, would like to have one-to-one specialist support, whether it be in the area of math, literacy, and technology, and probably in many cases, all of them. They'd like to have their own person that works solely at that school throughout the day in technology and math and literacy. And so, when I say adequate, I think that we understand that we have to use the resources we have and maximize those. And we are fortunate to have, I believe it's about 20 instructional technology resource teachers. But I know that when we have complex issues with our infrastructure or with our student information system, we have a very small group of people that are doing a whole lot of hard work at all hours. And I don't know that we're different than a lot of other school divisions. So, I'm trying to give you some examples to say that we, we knew a few years ago when we restructured and we had to reduce division-level personnel, that we were going to have to continue to function that way for the foreseeable future. But the bottom-line answer is we certainly could be better supported and provide better support with additional staff and technology.
I think that's a good answer and I commend you frankly for doing with what we have had to work with, an outstanding job. But it's, our needs exceed that significantly and I think that's what we would agree on, absolutely.
Any other overarching questions as it pertains to instructional technology or transportation? Ms. Grant.
I have a couple of transportation questions.
As long as you're smiling, that's okay.
Well, I'm sure you have wonderful answers. For, there is a large increase from last year, last budget to the proposed budget in the supervisor category. Are we hiring another supervisor? It's 130% increase.
We are proposing a restructured management team. I don't know how much detail to get into in public session since it would impact on salary information and whatnot, but I know that Mr. Forrest has been working hard to identify areas that efficiency could be increased and he's got a very good plan, I believe, that will do just that. There are some immediate position upgrades there with some very capable people who will assume additional responsibilities. And I, I hope that's enough information without getting too specific.
Yes.
I can add to that. Mr. Forrest was asked, when he came in as Director of Transportation, to spend his first, however many days, I don't know the number of days, as he immersed himself in, in his role in observing how the Transportation Department worked in terms of the delegation and responsibilities and duties. And we asked him to certainly make recommendations for how his current organizational structure could be enhanced to support greater efficiency, enhanced customer service, and better teamwork and collaboration. And so, these enhancements, and I think a sharper delegation of responsibilities within that department is due to that request we made of him and he has in turn made that recommendation. And they have been able to do that within their current operational budget through reallocations without an addition for the FY '17 budget.
There's also a large increase in professional improvement and purchase services. I was wondering what professional improvement and purchase services we were undertaking.
That speaks to the fact that we now have a third-party vendor that does the bus driver physicals. Prior to, prior to this year, we had the Director of Health Services was a nurse practitioner who could fulfill those duties. We now are not able to do that, so consequently, we have to outsource that and that's what you're seeing there.
Any other questions? And as it pertains to transportation, maintenance or administration, any overarching questions as it pertains to maintenance or administration? Ms. Blalock.
This isn't a budget question, but while we're talking about maintenance, I actually meant to ask you, Mr. Hockaday, when you were up here. The purchases we've made in the past, my recent past, I can remember in budgets for, for snow removal, did we see more efficient work this week?
I'm going to call Mr. Hockaday up for that.
Yeah. Just because it'd be a good time to tell us because I, I remember purchasing some items hoping that it would be there for us. So, did it work out like we had planned?
The answer is yes. I mean, the snowfall we had was one of those storms you have once many years. So, it, we did see a help in it. Of course, we had some areas because of this, this type of storm with the drifts and so forth that we could have used even larger equipment, but we did see where it helped our efficiency. I think Fleet would, would tell you the same, that we saw less breakdowns, more piecing together, we was able to stay on the road longer. So, that and keeping the guys a little more comfortable in the trucks overall was much better than what we've seen in the past. Saying, saying that, it also leads to, there's a couple other pieces of equipment that we need to have in replacement there in the CIP. So, we're, we're on the right track, I believe.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was asking, exactly why I was asking. Is there anything that you saw that we were lacking when this blizzard came through?
With, with, what's in the CIP and what has been, if the CIP continues to go like what's been approved so far and we can get those replacements, I think we'll be in good shape, much better shape than we have been in years past.
Would you mind being specific on the replacements?
We have one tractor that was a replacement that we have replaced. We have another four-wheel-drive tractor that needs to be replaced. That's, that's something that's pretty critical. We have a dump truck that we're going to have to replace soon. Those are the, the items that I know of that, that are critical items that we're going to have to have to be able to keep up.
Any other questions? Hearing no other questions in maintenance administration, let's move on to funds 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7. Is that Ms. Gaines?
Looking at funds 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7, what you'll primarily see is that most of these increases are related to the pay raise as well as the mandatory cost in terms of VRS and health insurance. There is one that I do want to point out for you, which is food service. When you look at where we are in our fund balance that we have, for FY '17, we are predicting that we're going to spend about $250,000 in replacement of equipment. And so, what you have to do first is to appropriate those funds and then it will come out of fund balance. So, we wanted to make you aware of that.
Which one is that? Who are you speaking to?
On Fund 3, you'll find it on page 17.
Go with Ms. Blalock. Do you have a question?
You mean that balance that we talk about all the time in Food Task Force that we try to maintain $800,000?
That's right, yes.
What's in that fund balance right now, Ms. Gaines?
Right now, I want to say we're easily at about $2 million easily. So, we're doing very good, about 2.7 million.
Okay.
Yes. And according to the federal law, you are not required to have more than three months of your operating expense. So, when we go ahead and purchase the equipment for 250, that'll make sure we keep in alignment with the compliance.
Yeah, because that seems like we need to be using, we need to be replacing. It seems like a lot. I don't remember it ever being that high as long as I've been on the Food Task Force.
I want to say FY '15, we did about maybe 75,000 and we're looking to maybe do about 75,000 this year as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, and that's probably something we'll talk about in the Food Task Force because it seems odd. That's sort of a break-even type thing and that's certainly not a break-even number. So, okay, thank you.
Dr. Meyer.
One follow-up with that because I, are there not now state requirements that govern our meal rate increases when we have to and when we don't have to? Are we going to be subject to that again coming up this August?
We look at it annually and when we did look at it for FY '16, we were basically providing, I want to say like 65,000. So, we actually exceeded that. So, from that regard, when we talked to Lynda McGee, we were in compliance, but we do look at it every year. So, we'll be looking at it probably in the next month or so and we'll be informing the school board.
I am glad to see truly commenting on the 250,000. That was the whole purpose behind creating the fund balance was to have sufficient funds there to address capital needs. So, it is living up to its expectation. And we just had that conversation with, with Fleet, you know, as to having to address a capital need and that's why the fund balance was there. So, you know, it's, it's performing like it was expected to perform.
It's living up to it and so.
Right, which is very good.
Any other questions on funds? Any other questions on funds? Hearing none, I want to thank Dr. Baker and his staff for preparing us with all the information that's in front of us and their patience in answering our questions in great detail. I thank you for that. And we're going to move on to 3.01 budget discussions and I'm going to ask the board members, starting with Ms. Shelley, to offer any comments that they may have in this budgeting process. Ms. Shelley.
I still say that our, Dr. Baker, our finance staff, our instructional staff, everybody did a great job with the CIP, with the budget, and I'm still 100% behind everything that you have presented to us.
Ms. Shelley, thank you. Dr. Meyer.
I want to thank the staff too for answering the questions, you know, especially answering our staffing needs question to give, you know, to put some meat on the bones as to the reasons why. And I am wholly in support of this budget. You know, I know we're asking a lot, but these are our needs and we, you know, I feel it as a board member that I need to, to support what are the needs of the division for the benefit of our students. And so, we need to go forward until we can have other, you know, the financial numbers, you know, with more clarity. But at this point, we need to proceed with our definition of our needs and present our needs.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Ms. Blalock.
Thank you, Ms. Braswell. Thank you, Dr. Baker, his staff. This budget clearly has my support. We ask a lot of questions, we're supposed to. We'll continue to ask them. And, you know, we don't always get everything we want. I won't say anything out loud, activity buses, but if we ever, ever.
Not out loud, right?
Get to that point and it's not going to be this year and I understand that. But that's something I'd like to see in future, outlying years, maybe a long-term goal plan and maybe start it back in small. That's the only little part I'm hoping to look for one day, but let me tell you, with what we're working with and what we have to work with, y'all do a fabulous job for these students in this county and I'm extremely proud to be on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blalock. Mr. Twig.
And I, in like manner, am pleased with everything you all have done to present here today and with the recent few meetings, we've gotten a ton of information. I'm too new to have been able to digest it satisfactorily to provide 100% assurance responsiveness. But I will study hard and quickly and soon be able to respond effectively as my fellow board members here. And I do support everything everybody's promoting. It's all about the money. So, we'll do what we can to achieve those funds, to provide all those necessary tools and equipment for the students and support staff to make all of that happen. And as long as we hit that 90% achievement goal and do everything we can to minimize that cost of per student of doing business, I'm all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Mr. Blaine.
I too am very positive about what has been prepared for us. I really commend everybody and the thought that has gone into it from accounting and secondary and primary and the superintendent. And I think this is great. I have just three ongoing areas that I, I just like to mention my concern and I'm not, don't take this as a negative to the proposal. First of all, we know that if you go back 20 or 30 years, you used to have a lot of labor in, I mean, manual labor people. Maybe 65% of the total workforce is in that category. And about 20% needed college degrees and the others kind of fit in between. And it's been a radical change. Today, we have maybe 5% where you need physical labor. The area where you need people certified, we graduated 841 people, I think, last year from, it was CTE, CTE registrations, which is, I think, really terrific. But that's an area that we need to concentrate, I think, very energetically. How do we take kids to see that they're ready for a career when they leave here? And I, I think that CTE is an area that we really need to examine and look at and we are doing that, I know, but that does deserve a major emphasis. The other area that I am interested in and that is, I think we need to be very careful that we keep competitive salaries for our teachers. I think this is critical. We have a good division and divisions, looking at what we're accomplishing, are going to say, "Hey, you know, we need a new whatever. Let's see if maybe there's somebody over there that would succumb to a $20,000 raise increase, even if they have to drive a few more miles." So, I, I'm concerned that we keep abreast and competitive and maintain that as a fundamental objective. And the third thing is, I, I just think every, every day practically about the number of school principals that have said, "You know, half the kids that come to my school to register for kindergarten have not even had a book in their hands for the preceding five years." Those kids are two years behind and the children that are well-prepared and we're getting some kids who are reading it for kindergarten, compare those two kids. Well, the child who's poorly prepared, his chances of ever catching up are very minimum. And it's for that reason that I'm concerned that we really focus on primary grades with this extra help so that when the time to teach is there, you got the teacher able to do it, not tomorrow or next day or the day before. But you have to teach when the child's got the teaching moment. And if you don't have the person on the staff in that room, it doesn't happen. So, those are just ongoing concerns I have as we've, as we balance the many things that we have to do with what our needs are. Because when, if the funds are not available for the primary grades, those are the kids that pay the rest of their lives with the quality of education that they have. It doesn't last for one year or five years until they retire. So, we need to, and I encourage us all to keep our minds aware of those particular problems.
Mr. Blaine, thank you for your comments. Ms. Grant.
I thank you for this budget as well. It's given me lots to digest and I have lots of questions in the works to get some answers to, but we got a lot of answers tonight and I actually forgot to ask a question. And it's more just a confirmation to make sure that I have it right in my head. SROs are not funded in our budget. They are, one SRO comes out. They are, count, one SRO comes out of our budget. So, the need or request or desire for more has to come from the Sheriff's Department. Perfect, thank you.
I also am very supportive and appreciative of everything that was presented and the way in which it's presented. Again, and I've said this many a time from the diocese, that everything that we do in this division is based off of our strategic plan. There's a divine saying that says that it would be foolish to follow a blind person, because you'd end up in a ditch. And that's just a way of saying it so everyone can understand it. But, and so, I know for a fact that this division has a vision for the future, and it's expressed through the budget. The budget's nothing more than a financial representation of what we value. And we value people in this organization. It's a people business. So, I appreciate the sustainability in the budget. There's been some discussions in the newspaper that King George is trying to raise their starting teacher pay over 41,000. We just eclipsed the 40,000 rate last year. Stafford is trying to push over to 42,000. We have to make sure that we remain competitive, and not only remain competitive, but make it as such that it's a, not only a great place to work in terms of dollars and cents, but a great place to work because it rewards academic excellence. I met an old teacher, friend of mine, that was my son's math teacher and wrestling coach. And I saw him in the, I went to go see the doctor, and he was in there as well. I said, hey, how you doing? He says, I'm doing okay. I said, I haven't seen you in a while. And he says, well, I no longer work in Spotsylvania County. I work in Prince William County now. I said, well, why did you make the trek down the road? He said, well, I made the trek down the road because of pay, to be quite frank with you. And I said, wow, here's a guy that was a math teacher and a guy that was a wrestling coach. A teacher that was involved with our students on a day-to-day basis, engaging them and encouraging them to be the best that they can be, and we lost him. If our HR folks were here, they would tell us that the cost of hiring a new teacher is very expensive in the acquisition and retention of that teacher. So, sometimes you have to spend a little bit of money in order to save some money. I know that's hard for some folks to stomach, but the reality of it is true. I also had the opportunity this weekend, while I was snowbound, to do a little bit of reading in the paper when it finally came. And I ran across this article that was in the editorial, and it really hit me, because I'm a volunteer on the Cortland football team. And I'm just going to take a moment to read it, it's short, but it says, "A huge shout-out and thank you to head coach J.C. Hall and his entire staff with Spotsylvania-Cortland High School varsity football team. Hall and his staff provide much more than just coaches on the sideline. They stay involved with players throughout the year, while school is in session and during breaks. Their continued mentoring of players makes a huge difference, not only in how they approach the game, but also how they conduct themselves on a daily basis. The lessons and standards set by Coach Hall and his staff will surely help mold these young players throughout their lives. I'm extremely proud of the accomplishments and long tradition of this program, and thankful these staff members have chosen Cortland High School as their home, keeping up the outstanding work, keep up the outstanding work, coaches." And it's a short, but a very succinct letter to the editor of why it's important to have our teachers engage with our students on a full-time basis. And in our budget, we are encouraging, once again, through the restoring of the coaching stipend, and trying to make it an incentive, once again, for coaches, I mean, teachers to be coaches. I had the opportunity to coach with one gentleman in middle school, and he told me that particular year he was going to quit when we had a significant reduction in coaching stipend. It was a 20% reduction. He said, Mr. Braswell, look, let me tell you. He said, they got rid of activity buses, so now I have to sit here all day and wait for the last kid to go home, or for their parents to pick them up. He said, not only that, we've had to reduce our pay or stipends, which are pretty small anyway. He says, they're equivalent of an indemnity now instead of a stipend. And he said, not only do I lose pay, not only do I have to stay at school a little bit longer than I used to, but the problem is, I don't even have time to see my own child play and participate in sports and activities. So, what we're doing in terms of sustainability is important for teachers, or what we're doing in this budget in terms of encouraging coaches to be positive role models with our children is huge. And yes, the bottom line is numbers, but in our business, people are what we're all about. They are the true expression of the dollars that we place in them, because they're doing the work of the most important resource that we have, which is our children. So, with that being said, I conclude my comments, and we're going to move on to 4.01. Ms. Gaines, the next steps.
Thank you so much, Mr. Braswell. And looking at your agenda, the next step, as you are aware, we do have a budget work session on Monday, that'll start at 4:30. To be proactive, we have provided you with a copy of the agenda on the backside of your handout. And then the school board is scheduled to approve both its operating budget and its CIP on February the 8th at the regular school board meeting. And then the school board will be presenting its budget to the Board of Supervisors February 16th. So, there's a lot of work to be done between now and then, and then we'll be working with both the Chair and the Vice Chair on the PowerPoint presentation, making sure we have everything we need for the booklet as well. So, we look forward to seeing you again on Monday.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Closing comments by Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I know it's been a long evening, and I appreciate everyone's work together. I appreciate the school board's sharp collective eye on the budget and the really good constructive questions and the dialogue that we've had here tonight. I think it's been a great work session in terms of transitioning to Monday. So, you have a whole weekend to think of more and to study up. I think that some other things that I might have shared, I think Mr. Braswell captured in terms of understanding that when revenues projected come up well short of our needs in terms of the development of the budget, that the, and I shared this when I presented, but I understand that the investment into annual salary increases continues to be something that is questioned across not only our state, but just in general at this time, and whether it be viewed as an entitlement unearned. I think Mr. Braswell at least hit my sentiments with the nail on the head, that I also think that in our business, and there's a lot of research that shows this, that it's not always the dollar amount that incentivizes folks to stay, but it's the belief that they are valued. It's the sense that they want to be a part of something. And I think a lot of what has been shared today, we really believe that we are going to great places in this school division, and that more and more high-quality individuals are going to not only want to stay, but want, come from other places to be a part of it. And being able to sustain a basic pay increase for folks who have chosen to be servants to children in the community, I don't think is too much to ask, even in tough economic times. And so, I appreciate the board's support of that. I appreciate that as we navigate this budget, that we could in the end have some very difficult decisions to make, depending on the outcomes. But I do appreciate how hard this board studies and how hard you work with our staff. And you do that all season long, but especially now. I sense that 100% commitment from each of you to help us get through this and to be better positioned for the next school year. So, thank you, and that's all I have to share.
Dr. Baker, thank you. And again, thank you to the staff for staying late on Friday. We appreciate it, and we appreciate, I appreciate everyone's patience as we try to reschedule this workshop, but a very important workshop, so that we can do our very best for our children. With that being said, we're at 6.01 adjournment. Do we have a motion? A motion has been placed on the floor by Ms. Grant to adjourn, seconded by Dr. Meyer. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And I hear no opposes. Meeting is adjourned.